Call this regular meeting to order, call roll.
Mayor Querom?
Here.
Councilmember Swanson?
Here.
Mavri?
Here.
Fabia?
Here.
Newman?
Here. Please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I would like to lead just to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do they need public comment? Okay, I'll go to Councilmember Newman for approval minutes. Mayor?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes from our regular council meeting on Monday, November 20th, 2017.
Motion's been seconded, any comments or corrections? Call roll.
Councilmember Swanson?
Aye.
Mavri?
Aye.
Fabia?
Aye.
Newman?
Aye.
Mayor Querom?
Aye. Now I'll go to City Clerk Nelson for approval invoices.
Okay, tonight in the Department of Accounts and Finances, we have invoices totaling $44,353.30. In the Department of Streets and Public Improvements, we have invoices totaling $527,929.95. In the Department of Public Safety, we have invoices totaling $159,897.65. And finally, in the Department of Public Property and Utilities, we have invoices totaling Mayor, all councilmembers present have confirmed their reviews of all invoices and now are submitted for disposition.
I make a motion that we approve the invoices as presented.
Second.
Motion's been seconded, any comments or corrections? Call roll.
Councilmember Swanson?
Uh, no on the things that's caused us those for the first streets and place parking lots, uh, yes on the rest.
Mavri?
Yes.
Fabia?
Aye.
Newman?
Aye.
Mayor Querom?
Aye. Uh, now I'd like to bring up Steve and Ben with Striegel and Non-Blocking Company. They are our certified public accountants and they're going to give us a presentation on our fiscal audit that ended on April 30th. So I just need your name and take it away.
My name's Ben Smith, I'm a partner at Striegel Non-Blocking Accounting Firm. Steve Arndt's with me, he is a manager, he was in charge of the job.
You're strictly gonna get my conscience, just move the switch toward you on the top of the mic.
Okay, it's on now.
Sure?
I don't know.
Slide more toward you.
Okay. There you go. Okay. So this is Steve Arndt, he was in charge of the job. We've been auditing the city now for about four years, I believe. Uh, I just want to thank Rachel and her staff for their assistance in helping us with the audit. Um, I'll just give a brief overview of the financial statements and then Steve is gonna go over the internal control reports that we have. So if you open up to page four of the report, which is the independent auditor's report, I'll just go over what this report is actually telling you. If you go to the second paragraph, management's responsibility for the financial statements, this is saying that the city is responsible for the fair presentation of the financial statements in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America. So this is stating that these are the city's financial statements, you're taking responsibility for what are in the financial statements. And the next paragraph, it talks about the auditor's responsibilities. Our responsibility is to express an opinion on the financial statements based on audit. I mean, it's saying that we did not audit the financial statements of the hospital and then it gives the percentages of the assets and net assets and revenues of the hospital compared to the city. Um, well further down in that paragraph, it says that we conducted our audit in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States of America and standards applicable to the financial audits contained in government auditing standards issued by the Account Controller General of the United States. The following paragraph talks about what an audit entails. An audit involves performing procedures to obtain audit evidence about amounts of disclosures in the financial statements, um, so on. So that's describing what an audit actually is. Moving on to the next page, about the fourth paragraph down, it has our opinion and it was a qualified opinion. So we're saying that the financial statements, except for the possible effects of the matters discussed in the previous section, in the basis of qualified opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects. So this is saying that the financial statements say what they say except for the items mentioned in the three previous paragraphs, and that's the basis for a qualified opinion. So if you look at those three paragraphs, the first paragraph says that the city's financial statements do not disclose the appropriate amount of detail for the police and fire pension liabilities as required by GAVB statement number 68. So what's going on here is the actual actuarial reports that the state provides doesn't provide all the information necessary to comply with generally accepted accounting principles. Your new outside accounting firm that's helping with the financial statements going forward will help to provide that information necessary. The second paragraph, the city's financial statements do not disclose liabilities or disclosures associated with the city offering health insurance benefits to retirees. This is a new accounting pronouncement that's been around for, I think, the last two years. One of the requirements is that an actuary compiles what the city's future liabilities are for retiree benefits outside of the pension benefit. So future, the present value of future health benefits for retirees needs to be calculated and an actuary needs to compile this information for the city. So again, your new accountants are working on that. And then finally, because of the inadequacy of accounting records related to the cash balances as of April 30th, 2017, we were unable to obtain sufficient appropriate audit evidence regarding the amounts recorded in the accompanying statement of activities related to the cash balances for the year ended. So about $190,000, we weren't able to reconcile that amount in the financial statements. We knew what ending cash was and we had to adjust to what ending cash was, so, but we didn't know what accounts to classify that to. So that's just saying, because we didn't know where the $190,000 needed to go, we didn't want to give our opinion on that $190,000. That's money, that was $190,000 less than what was on the financial statements that we received to audit. We didn't feel that there was any fraud involved, I mean, nothing gave us any idea that there was anything improper, just the bank reconciliations weren't being performed correctly and the accounting system wasn't recording things correctly. So when we were adjusting to what ending cash was, $190,000 needed to go someplace, but we weren't able to put our hands on what account it needed to go to. So that will be rectified. We were talking to Rachel before we came in here and the bank, all the bank accounts are reconciled as of October 31st, so one month into the, from when they started, I mean, everything's going pretty good with it.
I'll just make a quick comment on that. So this goes along with the bank account reconciliations that we've talked about for some time, they haven't reconciled in many, many years, they consolidated account, but we finally, um, have resolved that problem and now they do reconcile. And that's where that amount comes from. So everything always checks out at the end of the month, but there was always this discrepancy between what's on the bank accounts and what's in the system and that's part of when we moved the accounting systems to cash to accrual and did some upgrades to the system so that it's doing bank accounts reconciliations correctly.
Yeah, so you guys should be in good shape going forward and it shouldn't be an issue as of April 30th. So the rest of the items in the auditor's report relate to required supplementary information, saying that we are providing an opinion on that. Then there's other information combining schedules, statistical sections, schedules, statistical sections, et cetera, that's stating whether we give an opinion or don't give an opinion on that. And then finally, the last paragraph talks about other reports that are issued, which is the internal control report, and that's talking about that. So that's the auditor's report, that's what you were paying our firm to do, is provide this report to the financial statements.
So from the, uh, just bottom line, one year compared to the past, are we better off this year than we were last year?
You are better off as of now than you were in the past. So as of April 30th, I can't say that you were better off than the prior year, but there was a host of reasons why that was. Just the right person wasn't in place at that time and now you've got the right person in place, I think.
Agreed.
So you should be in better shape going forward. And just, in my opinion, the city is just at the right size to where it's not big enough to invest a ton of money in accounting staff and it's too big to get away with not having somebody that really knows what they're doing. So you're just sort of in the middle. So I think you've got a good solution going forward.
Good to hear.
So then moving on to the actual financial statements, I'll just give a couple of highlights and then sort of tell you what are in the statements. So on page eight, this is a statement of net position and this is the financial statements of the city as a whole. So this is all the funds and the hospital combined into one statement. Um, and just a couple of numbers of interest on it. If you look at total cash, not counting the component unit, as of April 30th, you had $3,342,963 of cash. This was compared to a 2016 number of $1,983,000. So the city is in a better cash position in 2017 than 16. The next number I wanted to highlight was the sum of three different numbers. So the deferred outflows related to pension obligations, the IMRF pension liability on the next page, and deferred inflows for the pension obligations. The sum of these three numbers are what your IMRF pension liabilities are. So combined in 2017, the liability was $2,398,282. In 2016, it was $2,149,172. So this is an increase of approximately a quarter of a million dollars. So that's the actuarial calculation of your future pension liabilities. So, um, that number's gonna vary year to year depending on the market, actuarial calculations, the ages of employees, et cetera. So that's a moving target all the time, but that's, as of right now into the future, that would be the city's liability that's calculated for what you're gonna owe on IMRF pensions. The next number on page nine that I wanted to highlight is the police and fire pension liability. And as of April 30th, 2017, that was $5,168,531 compared to a prior year's total of $5,029,000. So this is an increase of $140,000. Again, that's an actuarial calculation, but it shows that your future pension liabilities are increasing. I think that's a pretty common occurrence statewide. The next set of numbers are the notes payable and bonds payable. So the four numbers there combined, your total debt was $30,667,104 as of April 30th, 2017. This compared to $32,790,000 from the prior year, so you decreased your debt by $2,123,000 over the course of the year. So you're going in the right, right direction there. That's everything on the statement of net position that I wanted to highlight. If you go to page 11, this is a statement of activities. So this would be essentially the income statement of the city as a whole. The only thing I wanted to highlight would be the change in net position. So this is essentially the net income of the city. You'll see in the total column, the net income or change in net position was $1,054,000. This compared to the prior year of a negative $3,768,684. So this was a huge improvement from last year. That helps explain that some of the improvement in the cash position of the city, et cetera. So that's the statement of net position and that would be the government-wide financial statement, so that's the city as a whole. Moving on to page 12, these are your governmental fund balance sheets and the page 12, page 14, page 14 is a statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. That's the initial statement of your government fund, so that, those are your financial statements broken down by fund. There's reconciliations for the balance sheet and income statement, they get it back to the numbers that are in the government-wide financial statements, that's what those reconciliations are on page 13 and 15. Page 16 is your statement of net position of proprietary funds. So these are your proprietary fund, your water, your electric, your sewer funds, those are the fund financial statements for those. Also on page 18 is, or page 19 is the cash flow statement for the proprietary funds. So you can see that, if you look at the, near the bottom of page 19, net increase in cash and cash equivalents, you can see that your proprietary funds are generating a lot of excess cash for the city, so that will help fund future capital improvements, et cetera. So that's a good thing, I think you're on the right track in that area. On page 21, these are your budgetary fund and financial statements, so these are the two pension funds for the buyer and the police, basically showing what the total assets plus the liabilities of the pension funds are. Page 23 are the notes for the financial statements. So this is gonna provide a little more detail and explanation for some of the numbers in the financial statements that you come across. And you can read these at your leisure, but some of the important, more useful notes would be note three, which is a summary of your property and equipment. Note five is a summary of your long-term debt, so it explains all of your different bonds that are outstanding in the notes payable, details of those. So that's a fairly extensive note to the financial statements, about five or six pages. Note six on page 42 is your IMRF pension plan note, so this provides a lot more detail on actuarial assumptions that create that long-term liability, that shows how the long-term pension liability is reached based on the assumptions. That's about everything in the notes that are kind of interesting. After the notes, you have some required supplementary schedules, a little bit more information on the IMRF pensions. Starting on page about 61, or yeah, page 61 is the budgetary comparison schedule for your major governmental funds. That can provide some useful information. And those are on a budgetary basis, so there's a reconciliation on page 62, for example, that would get it back to the fund financial statements. You're not budgeting on an accrual basis. After that, there's some combining schedules. So for your non-major governmental funds, they're shown in detail in the combining statements and those start on page 68. So these aren't shown on the face of the financial statement in front since they're considered non-major funds, but that's the rest of your governmental funds that are reported in that area. And then the totals brought forward to the fund financial statements, near the front of the financial statements. And then a few statistical schedules round out the rest of the financial statements. So with that being said, I'll have Steve come up and go over the internal control report that we prepared. I mean, he's done it. Anybody who have any questions, but he's gonna answer, we'll go ahead.
Steve Arndt, CPA with Striegel Non-Blocking Company. So you guys sort of stole a little bit of my thunder and talked about a little bit of this during the opinion on why we disqualified the opinion. So if you have your internal control report, if you could turn to the final two pages, these are our findings as well as management's response and correction plan. So as discussed during the opinion discussion, the bank statement...
Can I interrupt you? Anything you know?
Yes, yes, it should be just a few pages and it's the final two pages I'd like to focus on. At the top of that first page, the final two pages, is the review of bank reconciliations. So this is where we found that the bank reconciliations did not agree to the general ledger by about $190,000, as we discussed with Ben. This is why we qualified our opinion on the income statement. We were comfortable with the amount of cash at year end, but we weren't comfortable with the classification of where that adjustment needed to go. So because we couldn't feel comfortable with the classification, we couldn't give an opinion on the income statement. So that's discussing what we found right there, as well as the city's plan. You're gonna notice a theme here in the city's plan, the plan to hire an outside accounting firm to perform these services. And as discussed before, as of October 31st, 2017, the cash accounts reconcile to the general ledger within $90,000, I believe. So go from $190,000 to 90, I think we're on the right track. The next one is in the investments reconciliation. Oh, by the way, most of these are recurring. So the plan before didn't correct it, so we changed the plan and we, I mean, management has changed the plan and going forward, hopefully that will work. And it sounds like it is, at least as of right now. So the investment reconciliation, same thing. It wasn't, wasn't being reconciled within an amount where we could just pass on it, where now we are required by auditing standards to discuss it with you, those who are, those charged with governance. So same exact thing here, hiring an outside accounting firm to come in, clean up the books and prepare everything, with Rachel and the city council reviewing these things monthly, making sure everything's in line. Self-insurance fund also did not reconcile, as well as not having the actuarial calculation Ben spoke about. Same exact correction plan. And segregation duties on the next page, same thing. Segregation duty should be greater now since you will have an outside accounting firm performing the reconciliation and they have no access to your cash whatsoever. So I don't want to beat anything up and I know everyone's got time here to go through the rest of your agenda, so that's all I have for you. Does anyone have any questions for myself or Ben?
I just, I think all in all, I think it's a, it's a good audit, especially compared to yours, Ben, so we're on the right, we're on the right track and thank you for your, what you've done, thank you for putting this together for us.
Yes. It is a team effort and I know we bother Rachel plenty, hopefully she feels like she's gotten her money's worth out of us, so.
Yeah, I'll just make comment, I mean, I've worked with them, I've been here two years now and it's been a goal of hers and it sounds like we finally, a lot of these internal controls won't be an issue on the next one because we're, we've been in the process of fixing them and each month I think it's gonna happen, but it's finally happened, so we're excited about that.
Perfect. Well, if we could be excused...
Absolutely.
There's bad times to be met, so.
So if you ever have any questions, Rachel has her contact information, we'd be happy to answer your questions that you might come across.
Thanks, thanks for coming up. We'll go back to our city clerk Nelson for...
Resolution agenda? Yeah. Next item on the agenda is resolution R-17-046. This is a resolution providing for the retirement of certain municipal indebtedness by the use of motor fuel tax funds. Mayor, the members present have reviewed this resolution and it is submitted for disposition.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve a resolution providing for the retirement of certain municipal indebtedness by the use of motor fuel tax funds, and this is resolution R-17-046.
Second.
The motion's been seconded. Before we go to discussion, I'll turn it over to Rachel.
Sure. So this is for the MST bond that we pay out of the MST fund, so we have to pass this resolution annually and submit it to IDA so that those funds are obligated. And this is for any payments since 2018, so the total is $95,570.
Any discussion?
Councilmember Swanson?
Aye.
Mavri?
Aye.
Fabia?
Aye.
Newman?
Aye.
Mayor Querom?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is resolution R-17-047, authorizing the purchase of equipment for the overhaul of electric generator number four in the amount of $114,868.44. Mayor, the councilmembers present have reviewed this resolution and it is submitted for disposition.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve resolution R-17-047, which authorizes the purchase of overhaul and automation equipment from the Revere Electric Supply of Through Illinois for generator number four.
Second.
Motion's been seconded. Before we move to discussion, Rachel?
Sure. So this, when we worked on our budget for this particular year, we talked about this generator needing, needing an overhaul and for those costs all being done in one year, we talked about phasing it, so buying some of the parts this year and then doing the overhaul in the next year or so. So this is just for some of the parts, not all of it. We budgeted money for these parts, but due to the amount in the agreement with the purchasing agreement, or the purchasing policy, I couldn't think of the word, we needed to take this to the council for approval, but Jeff is here if you have more specific questions on the parts. I mean, actually, I'm in the way, you talk about that, 'cause you know that better than I do, I'm looking for it.
Is this, is this a manual generator that's gonna be automated?
It'll be overhauled and automated at the same time.
So it's not automated now?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, it's strictly the controls on it.
And then how many manuals will we have left after this is automated?
Three.
Are these parts hard to find, Jeff?
These parts are not hard to find, but these are the same brand and type that we've used on other automations and basically Revere is the only authorized dealer, so that's why we don't have multiple pools to look at.
So we need to buy more parts next year to complete...
Oh, yeah.
...parts inventory?
This is a very small portion.
Oh, it is?
And there'll be more this year as well, correct?
We have about 320 left after paying for the rub this year to buy parts, so we'll pay you back again.
Okay, alright.
And can you also speak to, you guys are gonna be doing some of the work in some of that?
Yeah, actually, this, this is the quote for the equipment for the new control cabinet to control the engine. And in the past, we just purchased it as a package. Well, the first quote we got back from the company, we thought was extremely high, so we worked with and worked with and counted down about $3,000 on parts. And then we also decided to build a new house, which saved an additional $50,000. So we're pretty happy with that.
Any other questions? Motion's been seconded, call.
Councilmember Swanson?
Aye.
Mavri?
Aye.
Fabia?
Aye.
Newman?
Aye.
Mayor Querom?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is resolution R-17-048, authorizing a levy and assessive tax for the Princeton Public Library in the amount of .01289% for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2018 and ending April 30th, 2019. This has been reviewed by all councilmembers and is submitted for disposition.
I make a motion that we approve resolution R-17-048.
Second.
Motion's been seconded. Before discussion, Rachel?
Sure. So this is a resolution that the library has requested for the city council to approve. This is an additional levy for the building and maintenance fund, this which is allowed by the state statute. And some people from the library board, as well as Julie Wayland, the library director, are here tonight, if you have any additional questions on that.
Any discussion?
Is there any information?
Any additional information we need from Paul, or Carolyn, or Julie?
I believe you have the information from last time, if you have any questions on that. I don't think anything has changed in those estimates.
You know, when you were here a couple of weeks ago, we had talked about the budget, and we talked about the fact that the library, over the years, has been remiss in setting aside funds for capital projects and capital improvements, and is this maybe the first attempt to start putting some serious money aside for future projects?
Well, I don't believe...
Just your name, Paul. Just your name.
I know, Paul. Paul Arndt, President of the Princeton Library Board. I don't think we've been remiss, if that was the word you did choose.
I did choose it, but am I wrong?
We've been updating air conditioners as they needed repair, we've been updating roof and maintaining that as it needed repair. It's just that the library budget is not large enough to undertake those things that need maintenance and upkeep, let's say, 25 years from now, or 20 years from now. And we thought it prudent then to start putting aside this money when we can to take care of those things. One being the roof, the second being the air conditioning system, third probably being the parking lot, the fourth being the history room and the fire suppression system, so...
And based on what estimates you've received so far, everything is okay right now, or you've got some immediate capital projects for 2018?
Well, we have some immediate capital projects involving the air conditioners that were not installed correctly. They were installed not on the curves, so that the curves on the roof and the air conditioners are 30% less efficient, because they're, that isn't sealed. And we have a problem with the refrigerant, too, on that, which is becoming illegal, and we can't use that refrigerant anymore.
And is there a project you want to accomplish this coming spring or summer, or, you know?
I would hope we would vote to accomplish that, to set the money aside to deal with the air conditioning. I'm very pleased with ESCO, they are our air conditioning maintenance and repair service. They're out of...
Toluca.
Toluca, and they are the first ones that have given us very good information on how to repair that.
Paul, was that just discovered this year on the air conditioners not being correct?
That was discovered a couple of years ago, and we just haven't had the money right now to start fixing them.
And of course, it was too late at that point to go back on recourse on installing. What was the total amount then, the new tax levy would bring in additionally, just roughly, for you folks, just roughly?
I think it was roughly $17,000.
Seventeen thousand, correct?
Right.
I think that still puts them on a pretty lean budget, you start fixing air conditioners and reserving parking lots and doing roofs. We just spent $170,000 on the electric plant's roof, so I think it's a prudent decision. I think that nothing has really changed then, I think we had some clarification between the last meeting and this meeting on a few things that might have been concerns of individual council members, but I'm very pleased, so I'm going to be supportive of this.
I will say, this has been quite an education in these last two weeks, in learning about the local Illinois Library Act, and how it differentiates from library districts, and, you know, what it basically would come down to is that the library runs their business. They levy taxes that they need, up to a statutory limit, and once the money is delivered to them, it is up to them and their budget, very process, and how that money is spent. The city basically acts as a go-between, between the public and the library, levying the taxes for them, which is what we're doing, which is what we're doing tonight. So by law, we're required, actually, to levy the tax, so... That's it?
Well, I mean, I know that it costs a lot of money to keep a building of that quality up to speed, and you're going to need these funds along the way. I guess I'm just disappointed that you've made a decision this year to spend $4,300 in Christmas bonuses for employees, and I think maybe it could have been invested back in the building.
Would you like me to speak to that, Jerry?
Yeah, I think it'd be helpful.
Sure.
Carolyn, just here.
My name's Carolyn, whoops. My name's Carolyn Schaefer, I'm the Vice President of the Board of Trustees for the library, and I'm also the Chair of the Personnel Committee there. So your concern with our bonuses is, I guess, before I answer your question, just...
Well, I've never heard a municipality taking taxpayer dollars and giving bonuses out to employees.
You don't give bonuses to yours?
I'm sorry?
You...
We've, I think, got a $15...
Okay.
...for chamber dollars or something.
Right, I just wanted to clarify that. I think, I've talked to a couple of you individually about this, and our stance as a board. This isn't a new decision this year. I've been on the trustees, maybe, it was when we were in the old building, so I'm going to say 10, 11, maybe 12 years, I'm not sure. When I started, we were giving holiday bonuses, and have continued to do so. And in large part, the philosophy of the board is, we are so different from you as the city. Your staff is unionized, your workers are unionized. Our workers, on average, make $9.41 an hour. They're part-time workers, they have no benefits. They work at that library clearly not to make money, they work at that library because it's an asset to this community, and they love what they do and the services they provide. And so for us to give bonuses, and you mentioned the $4,300, that went to 17 employees and then two outside providers. Of the 17 employees, those bonuses averaged $241. That's on top of making $9.41 an hour. And so, you know, from the library's standpoint, it, not only does it, the dollars are minimal, let's face it, but it's a way to show our gratitude, our appreciation, and of course the money, you know, everybody can use a little bit more money, and just to honor our employees for the work they do through the year. They're constantly looking at ways to save money, find different vendors, provide the services we provide at a really cost-effective way. So I think it's apples to oranges, when you look at our library staff and you look at the city staff. And I tried this afternoon, since you have compared, you know, your $15 to the city, to our $241 average, to our employees, how do you measure apples and oranges you can? But so I went to your website, you have two clerical workers here at City Hall, very much similar as our clerical workers, only they're not full, you know, ours aren't full time. Those two clerical workers, on the average, between those two, make over $21 an hour. You know, the city is spending their money in a different fashion, and then they get a longevity bump.
It's a different type of work.
It's clerical. I mean, your workers could come to our library, our library workers could come to you, and I'm sure those clerical spots, they could easily do each other's work. Now, you might not think so, but I know what it works.
I am not going to compare your clerical staff to ours. I think it's the perception, Carolyn, and that's all that, I guess, bothered me more, is that from an outsider looking in, and they see bonuses given by a municipality with taxpayer dollars, some people aren't going to like that. And I just think that maybe readjusting hourly wages and eliminating Christmas bonuses might be a more appropriate way to pay your employees.
So you would rather, we can't afford to pay them. I mean, you just heard Paul address, it's all we can do to manage our capital maintenance and expenditures on our operating budget. So we can't afford to pay them more for our employees.
I'm not saying I take the $4,300 and reinvest it in increases, incremental increases in hourly wages, so it doesn't look like a one-time Christmas bonus, but I just have a problem with it.
I understand you, Jerry, and that's, you know, I wish you didn't, they're two completely separate issues, the building levy and recognizing your employees' hard work and dedication to their job.
I know it is.
And you just simply can't compare the two entities, because, trust me, with or without your longevity bump, and with and without your $15 Christmas bonus, the city is spending a whole lot more for employees than we are. We operate very, very lean, and so I think, and I'm to speak for the board, but more for myself, but at the board discussion, we just feel very strongly about recognizing these employees and the work they do for the community.
Okay, thank you for that explanation.
And did you go around to the state of gas stations or Sullivan's, who comparatively are making probably, spend a lot of money, I'm not sure?
I don't know.
What are they getting in Christmas bonuses?
I have no idea, I did not know that. Any other?
Thank you, Carolyn, I appreciate it.
I think the one thing, Carolyn, that we fail to do as a council, is we fail to have a councilperson representative just come visit your meetings from time to time. I appreciate the fact that, now, the mayor had asked if the councilperson would like to volunteer for that, and Jerry volunteered for that, so he can report back to us more and less, oh, if there's a big capital expenditure coming up, that we are made aware of it, too, so we're all kind of in the same boat, we're all in that boat. So, you know, I understand where Jerry's coming from. Again, we appreciate what the library does, so...
I know you do, and I'm not trying to say you don't, trust me. I mean, I think we have a great relationship, and it has gotten better every year since I've been on the trustee. And I appreciate your questions, but I also appreciate what our board and staff does, really more, I hate to say that, but really more, because they do it day in, day out, for a very meager wage, so...
Well, I think Carolyn, the mayor touched on the education, and we all, I mean, I have an educator over the last three months coming to your meetings, and we have, as a council, on how you operate differently from how we operate, and some of the things that apply to us don't necessarily apply to you, and vice versa. So it's been a good experience that we've got this dialogue going now, so I'm...
Well, it's good for everybody to know whose responsibility is what, because then you don't run into, you know, we certainly appreciate any questions, you know, that you might have about any business at the library.
And I think we can all work better together now that we know more about each other.
Yeah, I agree.
And, you know, and that library is one of the city's greatest assets, and, you know, I mentioned to Carolyn earlier that when that library was built, and then you had the internet, it got going, and a lot of people were thinking, is that library going to, is it going to survive? But that library today, I think, is, as you mentioned, is busier than it's ever been. And that parking lot, which is very large, is usually, they have the three-quarters full, so it's just a great asset, you do a great job out there, so thank you.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that.
Just a statement, I believe Jerry, at the last meeting, you had recommended maybe they could interact a little bit more with Rachel, and possibly even at their budgeting. And that's where I also appreciate the library, but at the same point, we have to support the taxpayers of Princeton, and where there's one raise, there's other raises that follow from the different government bodies, so that's the tough pill for taxpayers to swallow. I would like Rachel to look at the budget with them closer and see if there are any cuts in the future, or what ideas they can come up with.
Can I, um, we work really well together, Rachel and I do, and I appreciate your comment on that, but I think we all do need to be clear, and we appreciate any offers that Rachel has, but she doesn't have a voice at our trust, at our board meeting, and I'm not, that's just the law, I mean, that just is what it is, there's just no two ways around it. So, you know, Julie, with the help of Jen Alter, who's not here, but she's our treasurer, they put the budget together based on previous year's, you know, expenses, and while certainly you can express a concern or some, something, the law is what the law is, and it's our sole responsibility to do that process and to make those expenditures. I mean, that's just, you know, we might all not like the law, we might all like a little more, you know, conjoined, but that's not what the law is, so...
The Library Act is, as I've learned, it's language pretty clear, and as far as your levy and what you can do and how you spend your money, so it's just, again, we're required to pass this levy and this resolution by law.
Mayor, I ask this question, though, let's say that, I know this summer, the street department came out and assisted the library with, like, restriping their parking lot, so there's areas we can use intergovernmental departments to help with those assistance, right? Because these are, I call these folks our cousins here, so we can help them out with different things that we have available to us, that they would not have to go out and purchase, that would still allow us, our employees, to be utilized, is that, we can do that, obviously, is that correct?
Right, and we did that, and we didn't charge labor, we just charged the materials, and there have been other things that have came up.
So generous.
We do the same thing on the, for the Park District on certain items. And I think, you know, in terms of the budget process and communication, typically, we talked about this a little bit last time, you know, they send it to us, and I send it out, and that's kind of the end of it, but similar to the hospital, we can place it on the agenda, so we make sure everyone sees it and have any discussions that we do, and maybe I can have some discussions prior to that, which is why I make sure I understand it.
Absolutely. I mean, I think that's the best way, so that, just the dialogue is the best part, you know, so that we all know what's going on, what's happening, if there are questions, then they can be raised and addressed them.
And I do appreciate that Jerry attended meetings, so he's able to keep us up to pace in board meetings as well, so. Any other discussion? The motion's been seconded. Call.
Chris Swanson?
No.
Mabry?
Aye.
Fabia?
No.
Newman?
Aye.
Mayor Querom?
Aye.
Okay, next item on the agenda is ordinance number O-17-023. This is in ordinance, an ordinance levying taxes for purpose, for the fiscal year commencing on the first day of May, 2018, and ending on the 30th day of April, 2019, for the city of Princeton, Bureau County, Illinois. This is first reading, this has been reviewed by all council members, and is submitted for disposition.
I make a motion that we approve ordinance O-17, this is the first reading, by the way?
No, it's the first table of the ordinance.
Ordinance O-17-023, which is levying taxes for purpose purposes for the next fiscal year.
Second.
Motion's been seconded. For...
Sure, so I'm not going to speak too much on this, since I explained it all at the last meeting, when it was tabled, when the discussion was tabled, there really haven't been any changes since then. The amount for the building and maintenance fund that was just discussed is still in there, it's the same amount since that resolution passed. And then there was a small update to the police and fire pension funds with the actuarial report from the state, I corrected those numbers, but other than that, everything else is the same.
And there will be a public notice put in the paper on this ordinance as well, going forward, so the public may have an opportunity, resolution, so the public can have an opportunity to respond if this was...
On the building and maintenance?
On the building and maintenance, right.
Within 15 days after it's passed.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Motion's been seconded. Call.
Councilmember Swanson?
No.
Library and building maintenance, yes on the rest.
Mabry?
Aye.
Fabia?
Yes, on the levy, no to the library building and maintenance.
Newman?
Yes.
Mayor Querom?
Yes, thank you, City Clerk Nelson. No more senior reports.
So I just wanted to read, just over the last few weeks, we got a few nice residents recognizing our city employees, and I always think it's nice to hear that from their hard work. So I wanted to read just a few notes from these letters that I got. The first one was a letter written, and I'm just going to read a few lines, about the water department. John Agers with the Princeton Water Department and his team have done an outstanding job, and I wanted to make sure I send you a note to commend them for a job well done. The Princeton Water Department had to install a water shop at my home. They did the installation on November 9th. The water pipe was under the driveway, and my home is on a slight incline, the hole they had to dig was approximately nine feet deep. It was impressive to watch John's team dig the hole to get the water pipe. Because it was so deep, it took them quite a while, and each one of the men took turns doing the digging. Every person I have talked to since, I have told the story of how well they all worked together. I was so impressed by how hard, how hard they worked and how well they all worked together. So the following day, I dropped off a box of donuts for them. Even though I dropped off the donuts, I wanted to let you know what a great job they did. So that was a nice recognition of them, and then just yesterday, I got this note about the street department. My husband and I are senior citizens, and we needed some help on our street. We went to Tony Beebe, and we could not believe how respectful he was to senior citizens, and how knowledgeable about he was about the street. how knowledgeable about he was about the streets, he took care of our problems quickly, so we didn't have to worry about it, we are so grateful for Tony and his crew, thank you for hiring such great people, we shall never forget it. So those are just some, a couple of nice notes, and I wanted to recognize those employees.
Yeah, we've got great city employees across the board, it's always, and it's great to hear from residents who take the time to actually write a note and send it to us. I already have one item, and the city wants to thank Steve Fowler, Steve has been, this entire year, has been volunteering his time painting the fence at Oakland Cemetery, he's painted the entire length, just finished last week, just finished, yeah, he volunteered his time doing this, the fence looks great, it needed to be painted, and again, as Councilmember Mayberry pointed out two weeks ago, you know, the volunteerism in this community is top-notch, and that is what is driving a lot of the success that we're seeing in Princeton these last couple of years, and it will continue, so again, thank you to Steve Fowler. Any other business? Any new business?
Make a motion that we adjourn our regular...
Yes, public comments?
I just have, I kind of been listening to this a little bit about the library, when was the AC actually installed in the library?
Two thousand and seven.
Two thousand and seven. Was there anybody from the city, even though you don't directly manage them, was anybody from the city that might have offered their expertise, as far as engineers, to make sure that that AC was put in correctly?
Before my time.
So, hey, it's just a question. The other thing is, as far as the bonuses, I kind of understand what they're saying, but how long have they been going on? I heard the young lady here saying that they've been doing it for years? Does anybody know?
Oh, I don't know, I know that when I started, maybe eleven, twelve years ago, they were in, I believe they have been happening.
If they have been going on that long, then how come nobody really addressed it? Where they might have been able to do something different to maybe bump them a little bit in pay, to be able to go ahead and alleviate this problem that some of the people are glad to have, that these bonuses are being used for, you know, taxpayer money to give to their staff, I mean, that could have been probably resolved a while ago. How many full-time employees do you have, and do they have benefits?
We have three, they have health insurance.
So they have health insurance? Anyway, that's just kind of what I wanted to bring up, if these things have been around for a while, is to, even though you're not directly in charge of the library, and they have their own boards, if somebody might have looked at this, to be able to go ahead and alleviate these questions here, or has somebody feeling that this money, as far as bonuses, as they're clarified, may be being used in appropriate? They could have done something a little different if it would have been addressed earlier, thank you.
Thank you, any other public comment? Just your name.
Paul Davidson, I'd like to speak to that, too, I understand what you're saying about, you know, taxpayer, the way it looks to the taxpayer, but I can tell you, I keep the books of our church, too, and we actually pay bonuses to our employees, because we actually do not give increases, because of the fact, a bonus does not have to be given, whereas if it's put in as part of the pay, it has to be paid, so we actually use that, if the money's not there, we give it paid, but if it's there, we do.
Any other public comments? Okay, I'll intervene, a motion to adjourn to our next regular, to adjourn this meeting and go to our next.
All right, I can do that. I make a motion that we adjourn this regular meeting, and then reconvene for our next regular council meeting on Monday, December 18th, 2017, at seven o'clock here at City Hall.
Second.
Motion's been seconded, call roll.
Councilmember Swanson?
Aye.
Mayberry?
Aye.
Fabia?
Aye.
Newman?
Aye.
Mayor Querom?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned, and thank you for attending.